So at 6:01 on the evening of June the 4th, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Manzanita City Council. For those of you, and I hope, I don't think I'm jinxing anything too much, but for those of you who are regular watchers and participants in these meetings, you'll know we've had some lengthier ones. And I don't think this is going to be one of them, but we'll have to see how it goes. Got to get the business done. Sometimes it can be shorter and sometimes it just takes more time. So the first thing we will do now that I've called the meeting to order is ask to see if there are any requests for audience participation or statements. Do we have anybody who registered for that when they came in, Nancy?
No, ma'am, we have not.
Great. Do we have anybody online?
Pause in a moment.
Yep.
No, no hands.
Think we've waited our normal amount of time for that. Almost always as we say, there are no, and then somebody raises their hand. We're good. Okay, great. Okay, well, moving on then, the first thing we'll do as we always do is approve, well, hopefully approve our consent agenda. That consists of the meeting minutes and budget session minutes and work session minutes that we've had since the last session. So that would include tonight, April 29th budget meeting, May 6 budget meeting, May 7 regular session, May 14 work session, and then the approval of bills. So the normal process for this is that I ask for a motion for those to be moved all at once unless there is any council who's got a need to discuss any item in there. So I may have that motion. So move by Linda, second by Brad, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, okay. So we're going to start then with a couple pieces on the informational side. I am going to say right now for anybody who's watching the agenda and cares about the order, we're going to make a slight move. We're going to take the liquor license application from Adrift Hospitality and the event permit application from Yoke. And as soon as we do the city manager report and citizen of the year announcement, we'll do those two. And then we're going to give our full attention to the EVC NB, who've got a couple folks here to help continue to educate us and the community on the work being done. And then we'll get, we'll just stick with the rest of the agenda as is, okay? So Leila, you up first?
Thank you. Just a few announcements. I heard from State Park today, as everyone knows, the deuse area is open.
Okay.
They're still on track to get half their campgrounds hopefully open by July 1. They're still waiting on some equipment. And so they're just being judicious about releasing reservations because they may have to hold out if that happens. But if not, they should be able to start at least getting half those campsites filled up. I'm sure it will happen very quickly, July 1. Just wanted to note, we have fireworks signs, no fireworks please, that are illegal. But if you want, please take a sign with you. If you are at home and you want one, stop by City Hall during our walk-up hours. And we have several that we would love and appreciate for you to put in your yard. Just want to remind everyone, and I'll talk more about this whole thing later, but the planning commission has a public hearing on Monday at 4:00 PM. And this to hopefully recommend adoption of the housing ordinance amendments that will implement the middle housing rules in Manzanita. The planning commission has worked very hard on that and look forward to hearing from our community members there. So please show up and if you have something to say, we would welcome that. Just want to remind folks that the inflation adjustment goes into effect July 1 for water rate. So we'll note that on your water bill, but we just want to remind you that that little shift is going to happen. And finally, I do want to make a quick note about the Classic Street project. So we issued an RFP, we went out to bid last month. We ultimately, we being me and my team, made the decision to reject all of the bids that we received. We received four. And that was, we did that because we felt it was in the public's interest to do so. So the bids we got were extremely high relative to what we budgeted for. So that was a lesson for us. And so we have now revised that RFP and it just went out today. So just posted today. There's a two-week window for proposals, they're due on May 20. We expect a good showing for that. And we made some adjustments to the RFP that will allow us a little more flexibility and might help reduce costs. So one of the things we're looking at is a lengthier schedule. And that would mean we would kind of split the project into two pieces. Kind of the key thing we're bumping up against with that project is hitting a paving window. So you can only pave during the non-rainy season. And so we're now at a point, we were cutting it close last month, now we're cutting it real close. So we've asked the contractors to give us two bids for two different schedules. And it might seem counterintuitive, but when you have a truncated schedule, it actually costs more because you're getting lots of people working long hours. You can anticipate more overtime because you're trying to drive to a pretty harsh deadline. And so what we've done is we have split out part of the project to potentially be done in the spring. Classic Street will not be closed that entire time. I got a question about that. We expect it will be closed in phases. And then the other thing we did is we actually pulled the retaining wall. That's the part that really drove the costs up. So we're looking at that separately. And once we have a contractor, we'll start to negotiate what that project looks like and how we can fit it within our budget. But I have a good deal of confidence that we'll get there. It was a creative process. I'll say I learned a lot, but I think it was a rub, and I think we will end up with stronger bids at the end of the day. So that's all I got.
Okay, any questions for Leila?
I've got a question. So, excuse me, the schedule adjustments that we're talking about, is the grant, the grant money is tied to a certain schedule also? We have a completion date that we have to meet.
Yeah, so one of the other silver linings of this is that the grant funds that we have were for this biennium, which ends June 30. We anticipate, we're 95% sure, those will carry over into next biennium. So we'll know that for sure. And if that's the case, then we have a little, we have more time.
Okay.
The thing that can't wait, which will be done in phase one, is the water line. So that will happen first. And that, the timeline around that, we were trying to get it all done within that timeframe, is related to the development that was approved, the Manson De Pines project, the 60 units. And so that's one of the driving factors that got us this money. So we have split the project so that the water line is completed first, and then anything we can do this calendar year, and then potentially, and it's potentially, if we get a bid that we can do it within this year, we'll do it. But that's a good question. So we feel like we'll have a lot more, we will have more certainty once we get to negotiating the bid and before we bring it back to you. So I'm anticipating having the contract for your approval in July.
That's fast, that's next month.
Yeah, we worked really hard to get it revised now. And we did a quicker turnaround because it had been out there already for four weeks.
Anything else, Tom?
Brian, did you have a question?
No. Thank you.
Okay, did you have something to say?
Did you have a question about Classic Street?
Well, I did, but I wasn't sure it was appropriate to ask at this point.
I'd say go ahead, but Brian, I'll have you come around to the mic so everybody can hear the, and identify, even though I know to call you Brian for everybody who doesn't know you, you can say who you are and where you live, and then we'll get your questions answered.
I'm Brian Postle, I'm a resident of Manzanita. I live in the Classic Street cottages. So Leila, a couple of things. First, thanks for all your work on this. I know it hasn't been easy. How does this affect Vito's project? Because my understanding is that the wall needed to be done before he could proceed with anything.
Well, we're working on that. There's ways around that. So we'll just, we'll know, once we know they're not, we're going to do it. And if we are, when? And we'll just coordinate with him.
And how could you still come in budget with getting it done this year if like now you know you can't? So what's being configured so that you could do it still within this year?
Yeah, we've put more pressure on that element. So one of the things that we didn't get in the last round was a lot of details around the type of walls. So the way that the plans are structured is that we give guidance and it's a design-build situation. And so what we're doing now gives the contractors some rein to maybe come up with less cost solutions. So we've given parameters, we've said, these are the things you have to do, these are the kinds of sort of geotechnical considerations that you have. And we proposed a type of system, but there's a whole range of systems that could be put in place. And so we're hopeful that we'll get some folks to think more creatively about what that could look like.
And I'm assuming we have a hard budget for the whole project?
That's right.
So is there any risk that we can't do the trail?
So yeah, there, so the key area that would be impacted is the area between Highlands and Dorcas. And so it's possible that we will have to reimagine what that trail looks like without a retaining wall. So that's another benefit if we end up moving to a longer schedule, that we'll have time to coordinate and with our engineer and the selected contractor to develop an alternative. There is a possibility that we will have to do something that's less desirable than what we have planned for. But staff is committed to doing everything we can to try to make something there work. But just the spirit of full transparency that, yeah, it's possible, it will look very different than what we've hoped for. And that's not uncommon. We were surprised that the prices came in as high as they did, given the estimates our engineer gave us.
And my last question is, there's no chance we'll lose that trail money because of the June 30 deadline?
Well, I mean, there's always a chance, right? But I feel very confident that it won't, that won't happen.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been a commitment from the state, but just until everything's like in writing, I, you know, I don't think so. We've been working with the state on this for the last six months. We are not the only city in this situation. I think actually, there's a huge number of cities that got awarded this money. It was awarded in July, we didn't get contracts until October. And so I think there's, there's an understanding at the state level that there was a commitment made. And Business Oregon, who's been amazing to work with, has assured us that it will, they will make it right however it works out. But even they are like, well, we don't know until it's actually approved. And so when the governor's budget is approved is when this will be finally inked. And that will just make me feel better. As we commit the city to $2.79 billion, I want to make sure that that cash is there. We've actually already received some of that money already. And 2.1 has already been allocated to Business Oregon, they sort of send it in troughs. And so I feel good about it, but you know, until the legislation's signed, you know, I just be prudent.
Thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate your understanding.
Yeah, people are working really hard to figure out how to deal with it and the price difference, the cost differences, without losing any of the elements of this. Because this was an unusual project in bringing so many things together. Housing, water, wastewater, trails. It was just, it's a beautiful thing. So if we can keep all four of those in there and still meet the, still meet the budget that we set for it based on the grant from the state plus additional allocation that the council made several months ago now. So we'll keep it close while you, everybody's watching it carefully, and there's good people working on it. So we'll see, we'll see what comes from the next round. Thank you, is there anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next item we have is an announcement, which we do annually and have done annually for decades now, of the citizen of the year in Manzanita. So coming to the mic or standing behind the mic is Dave Dillon. And I've told Dave as he came in to please remind me and make sure I'm on track. So I have a sealed envelope, which was delivered to Nancy and recorded by her and then put in a locked file drawer. So all the Ernst &amp; Young practices that people might be interested in on major award shows were met. And so it's my honor to share with everyone. I should say, all of the people who've won this award in the past, and I mean decades now, come together every year, and that's the group that decides who will be honored the following year. And I know some of those folks are here today. So, Manzanita's Citizen of the Year for 2025 has been an important member of our community for nearly 30 years. This person has brought strong organizational skills to many difficult tasks. This year's honoree has been most notably associated with Cardam and the city's planning commission, guiding both organizations through difficult challenges and complex deliberations. This honor is a leader in every sense of the word and is truly worthy of recognition. As many of you have already figured out, including the person whose name I'm about to say, Manzanita's Citizen of the Year for 2025 is Karen Reddick-Yurka. Karen? Let me pick it up.
Sure ladies, where would this woman to run off to her? The divisional data gorgeous, and did you say you walked here tonight?
Yes.
That's what, half-watched.
What I'd like to do now is get a picture of you with flowers and some pass honorees that are here.
Oh, that'd be great.
Come on up.
Good.
Hoes, you don't have to hoe, you can stand next to her. Maybe we'll get Bill to hoe with us.
I got it.
Come on up, we want to see. Bill and Paula, come on up.
I think, maybe it's going to be.
Hey, you're going to be in, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, this faces this way. Oh, we'll take this.
You're going to make some hoes, I got you all, you all look great.
Camera, that's what the young people do.
Two right. There's never one there. Okay. Again, congratulations.
You're here under false circumstances.
Well, you don't have to stay.
I'm stuck, so.
Every word.
I know, I love this city. I love this city, I love it. The moment I came here as a college student in 1970, way too early.
Thank you.
All right, I'll put this away. I'm going to take this here.
Thank you.
So I have to say, I got a call from Dave Dillon, and I don't normally not tell the truth, which is a backwards saying of I don't lie. However, I was required to make a small fib on this to get Karen to be here. And because, because there has been so much work done on our zoning and all the work that's happening with middle housing, I asked Karen to come under the pretense of being, needing to be here for questions, which she still could stay if she wants to. But it's an indication to Karen that she, she had a plan to do something else, and she immediately said she'd make another plan so she could be here tonight. And I would just say, I've watched you chair planning commission meetings, that's how I really know you. And I missed your time at Cardam because I wasn't a part of that. But Karen consistently, no matter if it's a small request or something really huge, she just, she shows up completely. And she is always, and you can see it in her face, even in a Zoom meeting when we don't have the benefit of this, you can see in her face how she is always balancing, you know, what's going on and who's saying what, and the need of the people who aren't there, who know to even come to a planning commission. She is always and most genuinely trying to represent everyone. And I think that's the ideal that we all strive for, and you do it really nicely. And it's an honor to have you work on that commission for the city. So thanks a lot. And I won't lie to you again.
You don't need to.
Well, when she pointed her finger, I mean, you got me here. Thank you, Karen.
Here's the thing, point of semantics.
Yes.
I asked you if you could get her to the beat, get her to beat. He said, oh, does that mean? I said, say that.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if you want to disassemble it, go right ahead, Dave. Okay. Righty. You are, it's excellent. So we're going to do two event, well, one liquor license request and then an event permit yet. And I understand, Nancy, that Tiffany Turner or someone with Adrift Hospitality is going to be online today. Can we see if they're there and then bring them up?
It's on. And there she is.
Great. Hi Tiffany.
Hi there, thanks for having me. That's a pretty tough act, tough act to follow.
Can you unmute?
I am unmuted.
She is unmuted? Oh.
No, she's not.
No, she's not.
I'm unmuted on my end, but you might have.
Can I be on our end?
Hang on, hang on, we'll see if it's on our end. Can you hear me? Okay, that I get, okay. Okay, it doesn't appear to be on our end. Can we give Tiffany any, not from the audience, all at once, please, can we give Tiffany any advice on what she might do on her end?
I am unmuted on my end. There you go, I think, I think you're making me co-host.
Those two participants can hear her, but we can't.
I let a call in on the phone.
Hang on, audience.
Okay, right now.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Hello, hello?
I tell you what, how many years have we been doing these things? Every time, I think we've got all the snags worked up, something worked out, something else comes up.
Try something, try one more time, Tiffany.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Don't worry, I'm chair of our local school board and this happens every meeting, so I get it. Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yeah, you're welcome. So we have your permit. I know that staff and who else, various forms of staff have looked at this. Are there any questions or concerns you'd raise about this?
No.
I'm going to just read a brief paragraph about this because not everybody knows about liquor law. I know we have at least one, one business in the room who's been here. I remember when they were here to get their liquor license when they opened up. So there is an Oregon law that requires that a new license issued under a particular chapter requires written notice be submitted to and approved by the governing body, in this case, the city council. So this request is for a new liquor license for the Spin Drift Inn to serve alcohol to guests, and both the police chief and city manager have reviewed the request. So Tiffany, do you want to just say a few words and help us understand what it is you're wanting to achieve with this?
Sure, no problem. So our company is Adrift Hospitality, we're a company that was founded in Pacific County on the southern Washington coast, and we have properties in Pacific County, Cl辛 County, and are purchasing the Spin Drift and the Inn at Manzanita. And we're going to kind of revitalize the two properties and reimagine them. The Spin Drift is going to become the Spin with two N's, so S-P-I-N-N, and that is going to be the check-in location for both properties. And in the lobby area of the Spin will be a little lobby bar, it will be a food service area and a place for guests and non-guest alike to come grab a cocktail and a light bite. So we're just applying for a liquor license, it's pretty consistent with most of our other properties. We have kind of a check-in area that's just a communal space for guests and others to gather, and that's what we're applying for here.
Great, so are there any council members who have a question about this?
I'm just not understanding, it's open to the public, is that what it's going to be?
Yeah, so it'll be like a little bar area, it'll also be where guests check in, yeah. So we welcome all of you to come join us.
How many people will it seat?
I don't know how familiar you are with the Spin Drift, but the current lobby is just like a walk-in lobby next to the lobby between the Spin Drift and El Triolo Co. is a kind of awkward, large, right now it's a suite. I think at some point it was probably a storefront area, there's storefront windows there. So that whole area is going to become the check-in area, there'll be a small meeting space that'll seat 20 to 25 people. But when that's not being used for private events, it will be open for seating. So I'm going to say it's going to probably, when that's not in use, seat around 40 people.
Okay.
It'll be, it's a fairly large area. And we're just, we honestly are assuming, we took over operations of the property yesterday for the current owners, and then we'll be closing on the property hopefully in about two weeks. So we really appreciate Nancy for sliding this in because liquor licenses can take a while. So it would have been, it was really nice to get this in for the June meeting so we can get the application in and hopefully have a license, you know, sometime towards the end of summer.
And so it'll be more than beer and wine, it'll also be mixed drinks, cocktails, that kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, cocktails. I mean, we kind of are locally focused craft cocktails in all of our other locations. And it'll be consistent with that, but local beer and wine, probably some flatbreads and salads and, you know, meat and cheese boards and.
Nice.
Yeah, a fun place to hang out.
Right. Yeah, good, thank you Tiffany. So if there are no other questions or comments, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posted, obviously no, so the motion passes. Well Tiffany, welcome to Manzanita.
We're so excited to be a part of the community, thanks for having us.
Thank you, you can stay if you like, but you're welcome to depart also, so thank you very much.
I'm a sucker for a good meeting, so I might stick around.
All right then, you might want to take a look. All right, so the next thing we have then is an event permit. So Yoke will be hosting a pride celebration on June 29, and that will include amplified music. And so come on up.
You're explaining my whole spiel.
You'll be, you'll be, have your own way to say it, Eric. So, and they're here as we require our approval, the city council, for events that are going to have amplified music. So that's why we're seeing you today, Eric. So do you want to introduce yourself?
Eric Hammer, business owner, Yoke, right up the street on Leneta. We are going to do our second annual pride celebration, pride on the patio. This year it's only Sunday, so we, last year we did it two years, this year we're only doing it one year. Two years was a little much for our staff, we were a little tired after the second day of the DJ.
You said years and not days, that tells you how.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
So this year, we're going to do it one, just one day, Sunday, the 29th, from 11:00 to 3:00 is when the DJ will play. We will have food specials all day and food specials all weekend, but just the amplified music will be on Sunday.
So do councilors have questions?
I know you noted last year, and I guess I saw it again this year, you've talked to neighbors up and down?
We have talked to every business owner and our four, the network has four tenants upstairs, we have talked to all four of them, and the businesses across the street.
How about the Baptist church, have you checked in with them?
We did not check in, that is over a block away, we didn't know, but we will if that's a.
I'm just curious because I assume they may have something going on, a Sunday morning.
Yes, I'm assuming they would too. I do not know what time the service is paid though, so.
I didn't attend last year, but I was by a restaurant and I heard music, but it was not loud.
Right, soft jazz, kind of.
We have, we have a brother-sister local DJ team, so we expect it to be a fairly good turnout and support the community. We're looking for a couple maybe vendors to sell some merchandise, but we're not really counting on that, so.
Okay, are there any other questions from council? All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move that we approve the requested permit for Yoke.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Eric and Sarah, appreciate that.
And Jeffrey, I just want to say, you know.
Yeah.
Leneta is a buzz right now, it's so cool. I mean, we get sick of it when the end of August comes around.
For yourself, Tom.
But, you know, there's a lot going on, here's these two applications for new things to, well, Yoke, we've been doing it for a while now, but, you know, it adds to the ambiance of this, of this city. Unfurl on social media, I saw, is celebrating an anniversary, so nice, healthy business. You know, we all supported Claude and Leaf when they went up to that same building. I stopped and talked to Casey today, she's so excited about moving into the new build over there. And of course, I had to go to the pub every so often, and I talked to Deborah, and she says the sand dune is not for sale any longer, they're going to keep it. So, pretty cool.
You're pretty cool. Okay.
Yeah.
Right. That's good. Yeah, it's, it's nice. It's been, and it's also been nice. I noticed a number of businesses have been doing more with flowers and garden spaces and just stuff that really suits the town really well. I know we've had requests in years past for why can't we have all those hanging flower baskets and all that, but I actually feel like for our town, what's in the ground is actually more like what we do here and there's some beautiful spots coming up and some nice benches to just sit down in, which I appreciate more and more, so. Thank you. Yeah, I think Lenita's looking really good. So thank you very much to everyone. So next we're going to ask the folks who are here from the Emergency Volunteer Corps of Nahalum Bay to come on up to the mic. If you're not allergic to those flowers, we can keep them there, but we could move them also. So is that their room? Yeah, can we? What do you say? There we go, thank you. So then Joe, would you begin by introducing yourselves to you folks who may not know you already?
So I'm Joe Cooper. I'm the Emergency Volunteer Corps of Nahalum Bay. I'm the Community Emergency Response Team Lead. That's what CERTS stands for.
And I'm Val Camper. I'm a registered nurse and I'm the Emergency Volunteer Corps of Nahalum Bay Shelter Lead and Medical Reserve Corps Coordinator for the county.
Excellent. And so you've got a presentation for us, so please go ahead.
Do we advance it? There we go.
Just look at me.
So our emergency, we have two divisions, EVC and the Emergency Response Division is what we're talking about. And these are the different parts of our emergency response team. And I'm not gonna read it to you because you can read, so. If there's, anybody not know what any of those are?
KQMI is a radio station?
Yes. Yeah, and we, we have permission to use it in an emergency to give out information.
So KQMI is the call letters. What's the station number?
Eight point nine.
What does it again?
Eight point.
It's the classic music station.
I don't know.
So if there's an emergency situation, especially if we have visitors in town, they don't have a radio, your cell phones aren't working, they can tune into eighty-eight point nine and hear updates.
Thank you. So CERTS are the people who provide assistance to our first responders. We like to think of ourselves as force multipliers. There are only so many first responders in our area and in any kind, any kind of an emergency, whether it be the big Cascadia or even the tornado or a large scale accident. Our first responders are going to be stretched and so we're the ones that can do jobs that don't have to have intense training for so that they're relieved to do the jobs that they need to do.
Which is what you just said.
So we currently on the rolls have 120 trained CERTS who can be activated. That includes people all the way down to actually Nescuin. Because we don't know where anybody's gonna be at any time, so it's, it's to our advantage to have them kept on our rolls. So when an alert goes out that we need some help, anybody can be anywhere and they could be activated and respond. And this is what we do other than emergency. We do those things, especially the Fourth of July Parade. And Fire Rehab is where, when we have a fire that's a large scale, our firefighters have to come out of that situation. The MRC will evaluate them medically and then the CERTS provide them with water and food and then they go back to the CERTS and make sure that they're up to snuff to go back in if they're needed. And then Lost Person is a unique program to our area. Mike I think is the one who came up with this originally. We worked with Mike to do this and so people get lost. It used to be lost child, but we found it's not just children that get lost. And so we, we have, we have protocols in place. So if someone gets lost, we get called, we can immediately go out and start a search for them. The rest are kind of self-explanatory, I think.
Okay, now this is about the shelters. So the shelter's mission is to support and be a force multiplier, again like Joe said, for those responsible for sheltering. We partner with cities, county and facility owners ahead of time. So these sites are pre-planned and we have one in Manzanita, one in Nahalum and one in Wheeler. Ensure the facilities are in readiness to receive clients at any moment. We never know. Ensure there are trained volunteers available. Ensure there are snacks and beverages which are on the budget with EVC and B annually. So we have those snacks and beverages available. Ensure there are shelter and medical supplies and then we partner with the Red Cross as a backup in the event that that shelter needs to be open for a longer period of time. We just had a shelter and medical reserve corps exercise on May 3rd. It was a big event and our goals included activation, registration, communication, dormitory, medical reserve corps, providing medical care, and feeding collaboration between the Methodist Church in Nahalum and NCRD. The Methodist Church has a commercial kitchen and CRD does not. So the church would provide the meals and bring them to the clients. And then we provided Red Cross information also and we will have a shelter training on 11/15 this year. And this is a summary. We had not only an exercise going on, a full scale, but open house with tours and information tables. And so it was a really busy event and all good. It was attended by local, county, Cannon Beach and state participation and we all worked side by side. There were greater than 120 participants. Thirty community members were on the tours and 30 clients were registered. Collaboration and practice with the trained volunteers with the communications, shelter, MRC, CERTS and Prepare Your Neighborhood. Tillamook Countywide, we had leadership there and they also were fulfilling shelter roles and learning those roles. We believe that, like Joe said, we don't know where we're going to be in the event of an emergency. So the more like equipment, like processes and training, the better. And our focus was on emergency preparedness. We had go bags and contents of go bags as the drawing prizes. This is part of our group. It was very well attended. This was actually at the end when we'd all put everything away. So a lot of people, all very tired, but very excited.
Why are Lee and Joe in, in green vests?
Everybody has a different role and the blue vests are Cannon Beach Medical Reserve Corps. The yellow vests are CERTS.
No, the yellow vests are EVC, could be just EVC and B.
Oh, thank you.
And the green vests are CERT.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so the outcomes were that we had collaboration and problem solving. And again, we were, we were working with Cannon Beach and countywide. So we had people working side by side that had never worked together. And the volunteers are committed to learning, responding and being able to support our communities and county. The response demonstrates the good work and support that can be provided in our region by EVC trained volunteers when assistance is requested with an emergency need. And this provides another layer of safety for our communities and we always need more volunteers. Okay, activation is part of our emergency response system. And so that is requested by an authorizing entity, which is a city or the county. And that goes, the request goes to the shelter lead. The lead contacts the facility owner to see if the building's available and then we activate appropriate teams through the activation. And you can go ahead and go on. This is our, one of our new medical reserve corps trailers and this was, in the front of the trailer is the communication as well as showing all the equipment. Communications at the front of the trailer. And we were dealing with GMRS and CAM with WinLink and Starlink. And so that was going very well. Go ahead. Registration. This is our feeding team. So again, a collaborative between the church and NCRV. Same thing. Moulage. So we had the Civil Air Patrol volunteers as the patients and they did a great job. And again, the medical care was done in a collaboration with Nahalum Bay MRC and Cannon Beach. The EVC trained along with Cannon Beach CERTS. The countywide representation of the medical responders, again, like processes, equipment and supplies. And then we worked with all the communication. The concerns were lack of having medication and limited CERTS. So those are two things we'll work on. Another photo, this is going on in medical.
So this guy looks really injured. In one of the photos earlier, the guy had an arm that looked like he was ready to be amputated. How do you, how do you simulate that?
That's all the moulage, all the wonderful paints that people learn how to do and.
And you could have seen that if you could have meeting this up.
It's pretty, it's pretty realistic.
It's very, very cool. And it makes it more realistic.
I was at a training and they did a, they did a compound fracture and it was horrific.
It was real life. This is Paula taking one of our patients in.
What did Paula do to him?
And we have our support dog there along with our behavioral health specialist. And this is really the hospital staff with the dog. So it was nice that they could participate and they're part of MRC. He's a CERT. He is a CERT. Oh, it's both. These are our partners, fire department. We work right alongside Fire Rehab and whatever event they have. This is a sample of a dormitory. If somebody needed to stay overnight, this is how it would be set up. We were doing shelter manager training. I actually trained three more shelter managers. And so that was an opportunity to do that. And this was a little snapshot of outside where they were doing some stop the bleed training and CPR and safety training and wash training. So EVC trains volunteers in emergency preparedness and response. We're here to help with preparedness, support, responding as a partner when you identify a need that we can help with. And we're here to serve our communities in collaboration with the city and county, emergency preparedness and response plans. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure there might be some questions or observations from council. From Brad, because he knows the stuff.
Yes, it was really a wonderful drill. I mean, it was well planned. I think people learned a lot when they were there and it threw a really appropriate or great after action report. We identified the issues that we need to do better next time. And I mean, it, I don't think it could have been better. It was wonderful. And if you read the Headlight Herald, we had a really good write-up in the Headlight Herald that explained it as well. So it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Felda. Appreciate your being here tonight. I love that you had the photos. That's the stuff that really helps us who are involved with this all the time to under, not the, not the wound stuff necessarily. Because I mean, you see all the faces and you just, I'm just, every day there's something that reminds me of all of the threads that hold people together in this community so that when something happens, it might look like if you just come in and you, well, where's the centralized group that does such and such or where, you know, you don't always find that right away because it's all these, EVC and B is not small necessarily, but it's all these groups working together who are interested in collaborating. And yeah, I mean, it just creates a nice, creates a really important web for all, a lot of aspects of the community. This is just one of them. So I see a lot of dedicated people in those photos. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna go to a few business items that are called old because we've been working on them for a while, some of them for quite a while. And Leila's really gonna take the lead on these, but we're gonna focus first on an update on our comprehensive planning work.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Thank you. Well, I thought since we did have a lighter meeting, that we, we rarely, well, we never get to have a chance to really talk as a group about things like this. And so I thought it would be a good opportunity for us to do that. And so I would just welcome your questions as we go through this. But I also thought it was really good timing to kind of zoom back out and look at the comp plan as a whole as we start to get, well, planning commission's gotten very deep into the weeds, brilliantly so on the housing ordinance amendments. And so we have the first kind of big step towards adoption, which is, as I mentioned, on Monday. So I wanted to just sort of kind of frame up where we are. We also, say we slowed down a huge amount because the project team, which I'm part of, so our project team is myself, Marcy McInally, who's leading the housing amendment work. And then our consultants, 3J, who are leading the comprehensive plan work. We've still been moving forward, but when we lost Cody, sort of did have to slow a few things down so that I could get through the budget. So I want to thank folks for being, especially the council, patient so that we could get through that process and I could keep most of my hair. So I did just kind of want to start with, we have revised the schedule. We're actually not behind necessarily. We've just done some shifting of things. And we'll just be working on some items more concurrently as we move forward. But our goal is to still get the comp plan adopted by the end of 2026. And just kind of remind folks kind of where we are now and where we're headed. So we've actually done quite a lot of work. We've done a significant amount of community visioning and outreach. And so we're restarting our public advisory, comprehensive plan advisory steering committee meetings this month. And one of the things they'll be looking at is the draft of the vision. So we actually have a vision statement that's been completed and a lot of that was informed, all of that was informed by the town hall meetings that I held about two years ago and then the outreach that the, the past, the public advisory steering committee did at the beginning of, at the end of last year. So they did a number of interviews and meetings with people all throughout the city. It was a significant effort. They did an outstanding job in my 20 years of doing comprehensive planning. Was one of the most thorough, was the most thorough outreach effort embarked upon by community members that I have ever seen. So it was really impressive. So that has informed a draft of the vision and the process is set up such that we will review that with this group first. Get their input and feedback and make sure that it's true to form, that it's reflecting kind of what we heard. And the vision statement is something that gets brought up a lot. It's like, where does Manzanita want to go? And so that was the primary question that these folks asked. It was really broad questions about what do you think? How do you feel? What do you want to see happen here? And so we've tried to distill that into a document that will then sort of form the foundation of, of the comprehensive plan itself. It's just sort of a succinct reflection of the community's values. So we're not going to capture everything, but we're going to try to capture a lot of things. Tom?
So by the time you get started doing these visioning sessions, the new zoning ordinance, along with the building parameters, all of that stuff's gonna have been passed by council. And so doesn't that end up affecting the visioning?
Yeah, yeah. And housing was actually a big part of that discussion. So we've already done a lot of the outreach, but it's an ongoing process, right? So the vision statement itself really encompasses the, what we would hearing from the community really, I mean, I think since before I got here, but certainly since I've been here, which is providing housing for everybody and making sure that it's accessible to everyone. So that is, that is definitely incorporated into the vision itself. That, and I'll get to this, but like the ordinance amendments are an implementation of a policy that we're trying to put together. As you know, a lot of that is being driven by state law.
Right.
But we've worked really hard to customize it to our specific condition. Can I answer your question?
It answers my question. I just, in trying to make sure that we're respectful of that committee, I would hate for them to feel like, you know. I would hate for them to feel like, you know, a lot of what they're about to do is already a foregone conclusion.
Oh, no, no. We have so much more to do and I'll talk about that in a minute. It's unusual to do the code or ordinance amendments at the same time you're doing a comprehensive plan. It's sort of a little cart before the horse. But the housing ordinance, we have to, we had to have adopted it by June 30th. And so it was actually a really great opportunity because we were doing our comp plan to go out and have those conversations. So our first community summit was oriented around housing. We had about 90 people show up to that. We did a survey. We got, I want to say it was over 100 people responded to that survey. And then we did additional outreach as well. So interviews with stakeholders while the PASC was also doing their own outreach that was more broad and focused. So we really engaged with the community and all of that information really informed the, the concepts that were developed and then ultimately the amendments that Planning Commission has been working on with us for the last state died butts, pretty much. So that's kind of the first phase of it. So we did this large scale visioning, but then we just really zoomed in on the housing, really focused in on that. And, and now we're going to start working with the Public Advisory Steering Committee to move into the other aspects of the comp plan. There's 13 other goals that we'll be working on. And I just, you know, I want to remind folks that the comp plan is a development of policies and goals. So it's like the framework that the implementing tools, such as the housing ordinance or the zoning ordinance implements those policies, right? So our goal over the next year and a half is to develop all the policies and then develop that document, which will then be reviewed by the Planning Commission. And then similar to the process we use for housing ordinance amendments or any amendments, will then get referred to the governing body to actually adopt. And this again, for folks that aren't planning nerds like me, comp plans are required by state law. Because we are a smaller city, we don't have to do what they call periodic review. Larger cities that I've worked in are required to do that. And so what happens is, you know, like us, we did our plan in 1979. It was sort of slightly updated in 97 and it's just kind of continued along. This is a real, I mean, it's, it's not really an update. It's like a total rehaul, rehaul of what we have done. But we will be taking in a lot of the information that's still in the existing comp plan to help inform this kind of revised, new version of it. And the reason why it takes two years is because we want it to be really deeply informed by the community and that takes time and it takes care. So I always think the government moves fast, but we move methodically and thoughtfully. And that takes longer oftentimes. So I'm going to touch on kind of where we are, just to give you a brief update on the housing ordinance amendments. It's old hat probably for you guys, but it's not, never hurts to know. And then just to help folks in the community. So we sent notice to all residential property owners. It actually kind of went out to some businesses too, because it's hard to filter those out. This is what we call a measure 56 notice. We're required by state law that any changes that the city will make to property that could potentially have an impact on your property value, whether negative or positive, we have to notify folks. And so that went out to every single household, both within the city of Manzanita and within the urban growth boundary. Because the zoning will change in the urban growth boundary as well. And then, so that went out via mail. I'm going to thank my staff for helping and leading the stuffing of like 2,300 envelopes, was it? So we all took time to stuff envelopes. I sat at home in front of my fire and stuffed about 500 myself. And then I put together a Manzanita Minute that tried to break it down into understandable language of what, what is actually happening? Because we did get quite a lot of calls and I want to thank Nancy for fielding most of those. But the Minute actually helped answer a lot of those questions. Because we have to use language that they require us to use in state law and it can look a little scary. And so we wanted to be able to put something out there that everyone could understand. So that went out with everybody's water bill in May. We've also had it up on the city's website. So if you haven't seen it, you want to see it, or you got this notice and you're now just thinking about it, please, please look at that. And the main point of that notice was not only to let folks know this was happening, but to also let them know when the first public hearing was happening. And so that is on June 9th, as I mentioned, at 4:00 PM and that will be held via Zoom. So if you have written comments, you can email those to us at planning.ciamanzanita.or.us or you can attend the meeting via Zoom. I see him. And, and provide verbal comment. Tom?
I just wanted to make a verbal comment. This is, this is a really complicated thing. I've been reading so much materials.
You drilled me yesterday.
And, you know, and I watched the most recent Planning Commission meeting. And there's still a lot of balls. There's a lot of stuff in motion still. So if you're really interested in this, if you want to have some input in it, I really would encourage you to go back and look at some of these prior Planning Commission meetings and understand what the discussion has been. Because it's, it's still not finalized. And if you look at it and you want to have some input, now's the time.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we'll be, so I would say that all the balls are now racked. They're ready to be set, but the point of a public hearing is for the community to provide feedback. The Planning Commission still has an opportunity to address if anything comes up that they feel warrants change before that then moves to city council. So presumably I'll have a schedule here and a lot of it's like assuming that this happens then. But yeah, so I'd say it's all racked. The Planning Commission has been sort of figuring out where all these things go and have really just done a very deep dive and a very thoughtful job. Tom?
Sorry. But you know, the other thing about this is, is that in its original form, this legislation didn't apply to small cities like us. And then Suzanne Weber and Cyrus Travati decided to co-sponsor a bill to bring Tillamook County in. And so we're kind of a guinea pig.
Yeah.
And in my experience, guinea pigs, you know, like you have some trial and error. So what, what's our tolerance going to be if we pass something and then say, this isn't working the way we envisioned it? Are we going to be able to be nimble to make amendments? So that we make it what we want it to be?
Yeah, yeah. And that's, yes, that's a good point. Usually when you adopt something like this, it takes implementation for us to understand if those effects are happening. You can always change things. It's not with the turn of a pen. There's a process that you would go through, but nothing is ever set in stone. I hope though that we have done our diligent work on this and that the likelihood of that is less so than if we hadn't worked as hard as we did on it. One of the nice things about this process is that Marcy McInally, who's been leading the housing amendment work, is really one of the leading experts in the state. And we were really fortunate to get her on this project. She literally wrote the book on middle housing. So she's very familiar with this and in fact helped when I was in Milwaukee, was the consultant that helped implement the first sort of customized version of the state's model rules in Milwaukee. And so we were the first city to adopt those rules when House Bill 2001 passed. And so it was Senate Bill 406 that required that the cities within Tillamook comply with House Bill 2001, which is the state's middle housing rules.
It may be obvious, but I would just say the reason why that addition was made was because we have a crisis in this county. So I think it's fair to say the county commissioners were involved with that and a lot of people in the county who were,
100%.
who just did not want to be left behind, even further behind of making some kind of progress on the crisis that we have in, in this county. So we're one city. We can do, we can do some things. We can't solve for everything. I think the council in general, over the last three years, has made some significant decisions that affect the ability of people who want to build housing, workforce housing and other types of housing. We've, we've done that. Now we have the chance with things that are going to be new. I mean, this is not, this is, some of this will be new for Manzanita. I expect we're going to get a lot. I hope we will get a lot of comment. And I hope it will mean that people are understanding and taking in the need for change, but also what that means for them. And anytime, I don't care what the topic is, and boy, have I learned this in the last year. Even if you find one small thing you think that will be universally agreed upon, it never is. If anybody has a history in the town of the time when everybody universally agreed, not right now, but I'd love to know what those examples were. Also, but not to make light of it, because this is, you know, people, we live here. This is our community. We care about it a great deal. And understanding to Tom's earlier point, that some of the language and for people who are not used like me to thinking about form-based architecture and other things that come in, I don't go around looking at everybody's setbacks to see if they're okay or not. I'm not, that's not how I live my life. But we all have to, all of us up here on council, as well as Planning Commission, have got a really important job to do because for us to take what Planning Commission does, discuss it, take further input, because there's more opportunity for public input after the Planning Commission. And Leila will get through that. We sit up here as five individuals who will tackle this seriously like we do everything else and do the best job we can with listening to the community, understanding what the law is, which is not a matter of opinion. It's what we have to do. And then trying to, I think, as we usually do, find some middle ground. So there's a lot, there's a lot to it. And that's why some of those timings will be, we'll see how it goes. It looks like this will be the schedule. Because if there's more time required for listening, we will take that time.
Absolutely. And I would say that change is inevitable, but how we manage it is not, right? And so this is a very proactive way of managing change in Manzanita style. So just, you know, helping folks kind of understand where you can find this information. If you click on that button where the arrow is pointing, we'll bring you to this screen and you can read the notice if you haven't seen it already. And then you can, the minute is also here. So if you want to take a look at that. But you should all have received it if you live in the urban boundary. The notice looks like this. That's the scaring language. And then it highlights how, where the hearing will be held. It's on Zoom, as all of our meetings are, not for some, for, not for too much longer. So I'll talk about that next. And then the minute this just kind of goes through, you know, why you received it, what is middle housing? Why are we doing this now? What is required by the law? What's included in the proposal? Just really breaks it down into simple lang, not simple, but just, you know, in bite-sized pieces, because it is a lot. It's a lot, it's a lot of work. Then just to give you some sense of the Planning Commission has held at least seven work sessions. There's been additional briefings on top of that, but specifically on the ordinance amendments. And if you like reality TV, you should totally watch all of these. They're really great discussions. Sometimes they get a little heated, but very respectful and very thoughtful. And I think it's really important, if you are interested in this, it is worthwhile to, to listen to that. Because your planning commissioners have actually done an outstanding job, just really asking the tough questions, diving into the details. They do care a lot about setbacks. And those are actually really important when it comes from a livability standpoint, right? Like, you know, we do get complaints about, hey, my neighbor put their shed in the side yard. It's right up against my property line. That's real stuff. And so the Planning Commission has really dove deep in on all of these. And our commissioners have a really interesting cross-section of skills and experience that really contributed to a very rich and thoughtful discussion. And I think I can speak for myself and for Marcy and our team that we've, we've learned as much from them as, as I hope they have learned from us. And I feel like the last meeting that we had, it was so interesting. Normally staff would have to interject and I just sat back and let them talk to each other. And that's great. That shows that there's a high level of understanding of what's going on, that the commissioners are actually having those discussions among themselves and staff just kind of gets to stand there and just sort of be there if you need us. So that was a really, I think, a high moment for me.
And our citizen of the year runs a great meeting.
She rocks it. Yeah. And it's tough business. Like it's, it's one of the harder jobs, I think, in this town. They also received a number of briefings. Again, we did a housing preference survey. So maybe many of you filled that out, interviews, stakeholder surveys and the community summit. All of that has been funneled into the regulations. Folks may feel or see that I said something and it's not reflected there. And that may actually be the case. What we do is we take all that information and we really try very hard to incorporate everything. But we also have to balance that with what the law is telling us to do. And so I think we've done a good job, but there will be folks that feel like their viewpoint isn't represented. But I want folks to know you were heard. But we do have to, when you're, you're using public input, it's a difficult thing, but it's a necessary thing. And you have to really try to get, I always talk about the normal bell curve, the distribution, right? You're trying to get like two standard deviations from the norm. You're trying to get everything within that 95th percentile. And that means some things just get leveled out in order to do that. But we really did dive deep into this feedback and that really helped inform the initial code concepts. And then from that, working with the Planning Commission, we got real deep into the actual ordinance language, the, how the roof is pitched to, you know, where your driveway gets to be or not. So if you're interested, so we had draft materials up until Monday. That's, we got a bunch of comments from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, like late last week. And so we spent, we being Marcy, spent all weekend incorporating those into the materials that the Planning Commission discussed on Monday. And the only amendment we made to that was the removal of the materiality. There was some discussion about adding language into the ordinance about what materials could be used. And we just, we moved that out. And that's, that's the only change that happened. So the materials that will be the subject of the June 9th meeting, 95-4 is the Manzanita zoning ordinance. It's included in that cover memo in the attachments. And so it includes all of the language that will be in there. The other thing, and I'll touch on this briefly, is that, so we're looking at both the Manzanita zoning ordinance and the land division ordinance. So that's how you chop up your property to form lots. We got a lot of comments from DLCD on that. And so many that we didn't feel that we had adequate time to process those and process those with the Planning Commission. And so what we have proposed, and I think the Planning Commission concurred, is to cleave that off and focus on getting the MZO 95-4 adopted. And then we will come back and finalize the land division piece of it. We are required to get the zoning ordinance up to date. And I'll talk in a moment about what happens on June, on July 1. But we felt that it was important to take a little bit more time to digest that information and have another meeting with, work session at least, with the Planning Commission before we did that. So I'm working with legal to figure out if we can just continue that hearing into next month. And so I'll admit more by Monday. So again, two ordinances were noticed on the public hearing, again, 95-4 and 95-5. And then the 95-5 land division will likely be continued to a later meeting. Okay. And why this matters is that the state law that went into effect, so that was Senate Bill 406, which required, I know it's confusing, but it required the city to be compliant with Oregon's Large Cities Middle Housing Model Code. And there's a medium-sized cities one and a large cities. The large cities one is a little more, is a little more focused on, it, it, there's a lot more that's required. I would say maybe a little more, not a lot, but there's definitely more that's required. And that's what Tillamook County agreed to do. And so all the cities, just so you know, in Tillamook County are going through this too. Most of them are just adopting a version of the state's model code. Manzanita was the only city that actually dove as deep as we did into the model code. This code has to be adopted by July 1. We are not going to hit that timeline. So what happens is July 1 is staff will start using State of Oregon's Model Code for Large Cities to evaluate projects that come in. cities to evaluate, um, projects that come in. And so, um, until it's such time that the city of Manzanita adopts the zoning ordinance amendments. So we'll be having to use that model code, um, until, until, uh, we, uh, the council adopts the residential zoning ordinance changes, yes.
Um, so aside from the cities, it also applies to some of the communities?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the urbanized communities. So Nea Connie, Pacific City, Oceanside.
So your neighbors in Nea Connie are talking about this at the same time?
Yeah. And that'll be decided at the county levels, the county commissioners will be deciding that. But, um, but again, most cities and the urbanized communities have elected to go with, uh, something very similar to what the state proposed. Um, so this is, I should probably say, proposed schedule for adoption. So on June 9th, on Monday, the planning commission will hold its first public hearing and to accept public comment. And we're hopeful that that will result in a recommendation to city council. Regardless, we will have a work session with the city council on, uh, June 11th. So just following that meeting on that Wednesday, uh, to review hopefully the adoption-ready ordinance, uh, for some reason that hearing gets continued, we will just review what we have and what we learned from the June 9th meeting. Uh, right now, we're tentatively planning for a first reading of the ordinance in a public hearing, which will be held July 9th at city council. So at our next meeting, uh, if city council is in, uh, requests staff to have more time, we will make more time for that and we'll hold a work session in July to further discuss the ordinance amendments. And then ideally, at the latest, we do our first reading, uh, at the August 6th meeting, or it could be our second reading and then it moves into adoption. And this will be adopted as an emergency, so it will go into effect the next day. Um, that's a defensible, uh, that's a defensible emergency that we can actually implement that, so it won't have to go through a 30-day waiting period. So this is really up to, uh, the council, uh, essentially, and the planning commission at this point. And our job in order to get our grant from DLCD was to have adoption-ready language by mid-June. So we have that. Um, and so we, we should get our full grant from DLCD, um, but it still could change. And I think at any point in the process, uh, either planning commission or city council can direct staff to make changes. So, uh, I think just piggybacking on what the mayor talked about is that if those changes are needed and are necessary, then staff is prepared to do that.
I'm jumping a little ahead to your next update, but
Okay.
August 6th will be our first council meeting in the new city hall.
I know. Yay! Yay! So either way, we'll either have a first reading or an adoption and a party, so I'm gonna buy cake. Any occasion, but I don't want people eating in council chambers, anyway.
So I listened, uh, listened to the county, the, uh, planning commission meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
And I understood the basic, uh, timeline that is in front of us right now, meaning that I knew we weren't going to make the July 1st deadline to adopt a new ordinance. Uh, but there was still talk at the meeting on Monday about a deadline and the need to complete something by, uh, I mean, there, there's effectively a deadline that the planning commission has to be, to have to have a adoptable ready proposal.
Yeah, so it's really, uh, yeah, so it was really incumbent on staff to work with planning commission to get to an adoption-ready ordinance, and we are there.
Okay.
I, I feel strongly enough after our last meeting that we had not necessarily consensus, but no fierce objections to anything. And we worked through a very iterative process with planning commission on that. So there's still maybe discussion, uh, at that meeting. I can't guarantee it'll be a 7-0 vote, but we feel confident enough that we can, with a straight face, submit that to DLCD as adoption-ready. I think any
So once we hit that, we hit that marker with an adoption-ready, what is our next, uh, drop dead date?
Well, I mean, arguably, there isn't one, right? So we had to meet that for a grant. Uh, we have to start using the model code July 1. So if it takes the city council a while to adopt it, then we will just be using that model code in the interim. So that was the deadline, was you either have your own in place or you use ours by July 1.
Right. And I understand the, the, uh, general argument, uh, in favor of a more customized, uh, code than the, the default, default code. But the default code was in everybody's mind when, uh, our two state representatives. Of course, you get Tillamook County included, right? So it's not bad law, it's just
No, no, no.
It is a customized
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of the, um, ordinance really is built off of that.
Right.
It's just, there's a lot of adjustments that we made to manage our particular condition and our particular context.
And I, I, you know, I, I go back to your early statement, uh, that, um, so we have two different things happening. We have the, the state, uh, law that is, is, um, promoting middle housing, that is, uh, a requirement, uh, in Tillamook County. And independent of that, we have the comp plan process that we voluntarily chose to undertake. And in a perfect world, we would complete a night, uh, the comp plan process before we would
Yes.
The zoning code.
Yeah.
So we are in a situation where somebody outside of, uh, this little town is sort of dictating to us, uh, that we change the normal flow a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, I was trying to see the positive in it. So I saw it as a really wonderful opportunity because we were being asked to implement this. Uh, and it is, it's a big change. But we're also doing, like, I was like, oh, we're doing this right at the same time, we're updating the policies. How cool is that, right? It's, you know, I have more gray hair because of it, but it was a really great opportunity because we didn't put the cart before the horse and did the ordinance and then come back and do the comp plan. We are doing them concurrently. Um, and it's complicated to try to do both those things at the same time, but I think at the end of the day, it's, it's more beneficial, uh, because we have more clarity around what, um, the community wants from a policy perspective, and then we're able to reflect that in the enabling ordinances that implement that policy. So it is unusual, but we were actually, uh, received a lot of positive feedback, particularly from the state, on taking it on that way. And there's a lot of sense to it. Um, so yeah, it is unusual because there's a, quite a few things that came up in planning commission that we were like, eh, we're gonna kick that to post-comp plan, um, because they were, uh, sort of related to housing, but not specific to the middle housing. And so we felt like that those things kind of needed a little bit more vetting through the comp plan process before we could start recommending amendments. Um, and I'll talk about that when I get towards the end of like what happens after.
So, uh, the other, um, communities in the county, you say most of them are essentially, uh, defaulting to the, the state code with some minor tweaks or?
Yeah.
Uh, can we get, is, would it be hard to get a kind of a rundown on what they've all done?
Um, I don't think it'd be, you know, I can find out. Um, so they're working with a separate consultant team and I haven't been as involved in that process.
They're all working with a separate?
Yeah, so the county is leading an effort that I think all the other cities in the county are doing sort of collaborativity. And we just sort of peeled off and did, we did our own thing.
Okay.
But yeah, there's, and I think
I think that's the kind
There is going through it right now.
Yeah, I saw something in social media about that. I, I just think that's the kind of thing that it would be good for us to have a, a sense of, uh, you know, the council at the work session and
Okay, sure. I can talk with Marcy about that. She's sort of keen and understands what's happening there. I would say like the things that we're doing that's different, so we've put a lot of thought into the building envelope. We're doing more of a form-based approach, which is sort of looking at the volume and shape of a, of a building or a, a building and not so much about what's inside. So how does that fit in? And so, um, the regulations that we're proposing are a lot more specific to our unique condition, right? So, um, doing a little bit more in-depth work on, uh, looking at maybe where's the driveway located and having tandem parking spaces as opposed to, um, requiring them to be, uh, parallel, for example. And so it's like that level of detail that's a little different about ours. Um, cottage clusters, we have some, you know, we have a great example of what a cottage cluster is. That's actually not what the state's rules require. And so we developed a customized version of that. So I think ours are very similar, they're just adapted to, again, Manzanita's context and condition.
Okay. Um, I, I just like to say that, uh, having, uh, listened to the planning commission meeting, uh, I was both impressed by the seriousness of the group and the, and the, uh, diversity of thought, uh, within the group and the, uh, you know, the professionalism and preparedness of the group. But I was also somewhat, uh, intimidated by the fact that we are pretty deep into the process and it seemed to me that there was still, uh, you know, still some work to be done before that group reached a true consensus. Now that, this isn't necessarily goal, I mean, theoretically, they could vote, um, on Monday and 4-3 prevails, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and it, and I'm not afraid of a 4-3 vote, uh, if that were to be the case, but that, to me, that would just, because that planning commission reflects the community well, um, and broadly, uh, that would tell me that city council's got a lot of work to do, uh, to make sure we get this right. And that timeline may not allow us, uh, as much time as we need, but you've already indicated that you, you know, it's flexible. Yeah, okay.
No, we're flexible. And I think, you know, I think, oh, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak to what I think people will vote, but I do feel like Karen can step up and tell me if I'm wrong, but I do feel like there's a lot of collegiality between the members of the commission. And I think we would have really understood if there was some really deep things that were problematic.
Okay.
There is definitely folks that have some concerns about specific things within the ordinance, but I think as all of you well know, that's not uncommon when you have a group of people who are trying to make a decision on a complex issue that ranges very broadly. And so, um, yeah, so we'll just see how it goes. And that's why we scheduled a work session on the 11th, so that we can brief on that. And you'll also get a very good sense of where the community is at, uh, at that meeting as well, and who shows up and what the questions are that are asked and how we, uh, address those and how the planning commission addresses those. But I think you're no stranger, and planning commission is certainly no stranger to difficult, uh, decisions. And we've had quite a few of them over the last couple of years. Uh, so I feel very confident in the work that they have done and they've worked really well together. So, um, I'm hopeful that we'll see more consensus than a 4-3 vote, but we'll, we'll deal with it how it falls.
Sure.
And we'll do it thoughtfully. And I saw him was chopping at the bit.
I'm not chopping at the bit, but, um, Jerry's question, initial question made me wonder. So on July 1st, we default to the, uh, whatever the model plan is, right? Okay. And then if we go on this timeline, then there's about, uh, a five-week interim period, um, where we're not on the plan of our choosing, but by default.
Yeah.
Are we aware of any developers that are planning to do something that would sneak in and do something that wouldn't be completely within what our, our preferred plan would be?
I have no idea. Yeah, I just don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it could be a deadline that's really got no impact?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it's anything to be fearful of, right?
Right, okay.
I think the, uh, model code, you know, the big difference is our town homes, uh, that, how we've, uh, defined them versus how they have, uh, the flexibility, uh, that we've recommended for, um, cottage clusters, things of that nature. So I don't think it's anything to be fearful of. And I think it's important too to remind folks that just because this passes doesn't mean there's gonna be a huge onslaught of development overnight. Like, it's gonna be incremental. And frankly, the market right now is not producing a lot of housing, housing isn't really selling. And so I just, it isn't to say that we don't want to see housing constructed and that we don't want to see middle housing built, but I do want to just sort of temper people's concern, if there are, is any, that just overnight, we're just gonna start to see a massive amount of development. It's just
I'm gonna develop stuff and you're gonna hate it and you'll
Yes.
It's gonna be fine.
Natural feeling to feel that, because it is a shift, you know? So it isn't to say that folks that are concerned about that are, you know, that there's not a reason for that, but I just do want to say that it, it, it won't happen overnight, it will be incremental and it will happen over time, likely years. Um, so, just a Public service announcement. Yeah. Okay. Um, so back to the schedule. So this is where we are now. Um, where we're, so what we're doing right now, just kind of recap of what we've done is we've worked on goal one, which is citizen involvement. Um, we've also worked on natural resources, scenic historic areas and open spaces. That was part of our summit that we did, um, in, is that October?
Yes.
It was October. And then housing. So the next phase, you can see, has a theme to it, uh, which is really about, um, water-related resources and natural hazards. Um, and then, so that will be the work that we'll start to work on now through the fall. And that's goals 6, 7, 17, 18, 19. And then we will move to more of the urbanized side of things. And so something that's come up throughout this is like, hey, why aren't you guys touching the C1 or the commercial district? That's where this starts to happen, is in the land use planning, uh, goal, which is goal two, uh, energy conservation, urbanization and public facilities and services, uh, chapters. And then we'll top it off with ec dev, uh, economic development and recreational needs. Um, our summit two is really going to be focused on goals 17, 18 and 19. Uh, we did receive that grant from DLCD, which is really wonderful. Um, and Meg Reed from DLCD is actually be working with us, uh, on this. So we received a $14,000 and some change, um, grant to help do this work. And so they'll be involved in the summit and working with us to, um, to get that input so that we can start to develop goals. Uh, there's been a lot of, uh, new mapping done on ocean shores, uh, natural hazard mapping. And so we'll be able to integrate all that new, uh, data and information into our, um, into our comp plan. Um, so I just want to talk a little bit about how, how and what a comp plan is. So we started with a background report, we've completed that, that's been distributed and reviewed. Um, and that just sort of sets the stage for existing conditions. The next piece that we'll be working with the advisory committee and then putting out to the public more broadly is our community vision. And so again, that statement of who we are and where we want to be. And then as we go through each of those chapters, we'll be developing goals and policies. And so policies are those larger scale, uh, statements about what we want to do. So if, for example, we want to provide housing that is accessible to a range of people, incomes and stages of life. The housing ordinance implements that by providing opportunities for different styles of housing in Manzanita besides, uh, single-family homes. Um, so the goal statements will be developed as we go through each, uh, section. So we kind of go back to this, we'll work on developing, we're in the process of developing goals for one, five and 10, and we'll start to develop them for the six, seven, 17, 18 and 19 and so on. And we'll be reviewing those with the advisory committee as we go through them. And then we'll package it all up and put it into a beautiful document that will then become the, uh, discussion draft that planning commission will start to review and then, um, ideally, we'll move to city council for adoption. That will also include a revision of our comprehensive plan map, which is also the same as our zoning map. They just have different titles for them. So we'll also be developing a new map that reflects our new policies. Um, and I've kind of already gone through this, but just to sort of, I always like visuals, sort of talk about this, but like the vision is what really helps inform the goals. The goals are sort of broader statements that, um, define what we want to achieve. The policies are more specific and guide actions, and then you have specific action items. Um, and so those are the things that get implemented later, such as additional amendments to the zoning ordinance. Um, and so after the plan is adopted, we're not done. And so after the plan is adopted, we're not done, right? We've actually only just begun. And so that is when we start to move, which is my favorite part, where I've spent the majority of my career is implementing comp plans. So that's amendments to the zoning ordinance. And there will be additional amendments we'll make. And that's no small feat as we are learning as we go through the housing stuff. We update other related plans. We might see that an outcome of this is we need to update the Dune Mass Management Plan. We need to update the Parks Master Plan. We may see that we need to update some of our facility plans. So this helps set an action item list that the, the city council can help prioritize for staff to implement. And then finally, there's project and strategies. So land banking of properties or disposition of existing properties, uh environmental stewardship activities and so on. And so these are the actions that we then take to implement those policies. And that's really where it starts to get super exciting in my mind, is you start to deliver on those things. And the wonderful thing about having a comprehensive plan that is developed in this way is that it sets a framework for all of you to say, okay, this is what the community has told us. Here's what we've done and here's what we still have yet to do. And that allows for a more, I think, rich discussion when we talk about goal setting every year about, well, what are we going to do this year? So you start to get a, you know, sort of a list that we get to start picking from. And uh, that's really exciting in my mind. And where, you know, the rubber hits the road. Okay, so do you have any other questions? And hopefully that was helpful. I just love nerding out about this stuff.
Well, it's been on the priority list and we're working on it. So that always feels good. We resourced for it. We planned for it in the budget for last year. We're planning for it in the budget for this year. You've gone after grants to help supplement that, which is good. I was thinking a little bit about Jerry's comments and some of Tom's comments. You know, life happens. So any project, any work, it's going to take two years of thoughtful work. Other things going to happen. We also don't know what other legislation might come at us in the next two years that could change this. So the strength I think we have shown so far, and I'd expect us to continue to show, is taking what we're given and we need to deal with and then figuring out how it works and how we keep moving forward, which is how I, oh, I look at this possibly in an oversimplified, over optimistic manner, but that is how I look at it. We'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. I also think it's not bad that we're having the opportunity to get at that little housing stuff now because it gives people, it gives people in the community and all of us a very direct connection with the reality of turning this stuff into law, you know, law that we all have to follow. And when you're envisioning and visioning and this goes on for a long time, I mean, things are wonderful and they're kind of dreamy sometimes and they're very aspirational. It's not bad at all in my mind to have a very practical and important piece of the work getting implemented so people understand what it will really mean when we get to, after the visioning session we do in the um later this summer and fall, what that could actually mean in terms of like real tangible changes or improvements, I hope, to the community. So, so it's good. We've had to be flexible. It's been hard to shift with timing and, you know, want to get a plan, we'd love to kind of stick with the plan. But you have to work it um and deal with the reality of staff changes and those that have come at us. So yeah, so I'd say thank you for the, for the update today. And for some of us who've been close to this for a while, this feels like repetition, but I'm always reminded about, there are a lot of, a lot of moving parts in this and a lot of learning for the entire community to do. So I think it's, it's time well spent. So thank you, Leila.
Yeah.
Yeah. And speaking of implementing.
Hey.
Should we go to the?
Yeah.
Last topic from you today, which is an update on city hall. The trees have arrived, landscaping is going in. There we go.
Yeah, it looks really good. I have some photos of the inside too.
Great, oh, great.
Yeah, it's been an effort and I'm happy to see Rick's here today, everybody. Look, Rick. And he's been a huge help, um, my go-to guy on this. So thank you, Rick, for everything you've been doing. So I want to provide an update. And then I also, my main focus was to start preparing people for our transition over into the building, which will have some impacts on how we provide service. And we'll continue to provide service, but it'll be a little different until we open. So just to give you a sense of like project status, the contractor's scope. So we achieved substantial completion in mid-May. We did a punch walk and so that's what we go through and we nitpick on every little thing that we see along with the architect. And then the contractor comes back in and fixes all of that stuff. And they're just little things like, oh, there's a little scratch here and uh we need grout on these two tiles or whatnot. And so um it was not a huge list, but there were some things that needed to be addressed. We expect that landscaping will be primarily completed by the end of the week. Uh, we had to address sort of a last minute change on uh Manzanita Avenue related to stormwater drainage. We had a rain and we saw some things that we're like, huh, we can fix that now. So we worked with our landscape, um, with our, with our uh contractor and with the architect to come up with a, a new solution for that. So a lot of these things are happening and I've been over there like five times today. Furniture is being installed this week, so we're starting to see all of our desks and everything come in to the space, which is making it feel more real. Uh, we'll do a punch walk Friday with the insure, uh insurance, the, we got insurance for the building for, with the uh furniture provider. And then work will be completed before the end of the month. So everything will be paid, project will be closed. So we're very excited. I was very like, I gotta pay you this fiscal year. So everything will be done. Uh, there's still quite a bit of work we have to do on our side. So uh, the contractor's job was to do, you know, ninety-five percent of the work. And then we actually have a pretty big scope of work for ourselves. That includes all of the technology and we have one guy who's doing all of it. Uh, that's Josh, who also has a full-time job, but he's been working very hard. Uh, he's got our wifi up and running. I think it opened up during farmer's market and like a hundred and fifty people tried to tap in as soon as it came live, which was hilarious. So he shut it down. We're working on all of that. There's still, we have security cameras to get in place. You've got to get all of our access control up to date. A lot of media work so that this system is integrated into the council chambers. We have antenna and radio communications that have to get installed and uh that was an interesting journey. But we expect the majority of that to be completed mid-July. That also includes the migration of all of the staff and all of getting all of our computers connected to wifi, getting connected to the furniture, making sure all of those things connect and talk to each other. So it's, it's going to be a journey.
In comfortable chairs.
In comfortable chairs, yes. You have comfortable chairs. So the timeline uh for our move-in is PD will start moving next week. Uh, they'll start migrating. They have a pretty complex communication system, so we'll start moving all of that over next week. I think we have like four people showing up on Monday to help get all that stuff transferred over. And then they should be operating out of their new building next week, uh by the end of next week. So we'll start migrating computers over, um, all of those systems and will be in place. And then the uh, I just, just want to remind folks that there will be no public access to the police building. So we will probably uh, until we open to the public, have that sort of cordoned off. But if you do need to contact a police officer in this timeframe, just please call the non-emergency number. Unless it's an emergency, call nine-one-one. And then when we do open, we'll just ask people to please come to the city hall reception desk to contact a police member. So we don't want folks uh knocking on the door up there. And if it happens, it happens, but. So the administration, um, so we will officially close our walk-up service to city hall on June nineteenth at noon, when our window typically closes. So that's two weeks from tomorrow. We will reopen for walk-up service August fourth and we'll have our new hours, which will be nine to four. Right now, we're nine to noon and that will be Monday through Thursday. I do want to emphasize, we will still be receiving phone calls. We will still be answering them. We will still be doing emails. But during this transition time, um, we will be closed for walk-up service until the city is fully open and operating. Uh, we will begin our migration. Some of us might start moving a little bit next week, but that will really start in earnest on the seventeenth. We have photographer coming on the sixteenth to take pictures. And so they don't want all our junk in there, uh, but uh we will start moving computers over. And um, that might take a minute for us to get all of our systems in place. Planning and development will be moving from the water treatment plant. And then all of us at Old City Hall will be moving into the new building. Uh, the building dedication opening will be August second. Please mark your calendars. It's going to be fun and a party. It's going to be great. We'll have amplified music. They said it was okay, so. And um, city hall will open for business August fourth. We will still be checking the Dropbox and ask people to use the Dropbox at the Dorcas site until city hall opens. It will be blocked off, so um the Dropbox at city hall will be at the old city hall until August fourth. We'll continue to check it until we take it down. So just a few dates to note that we close for walk-up service, as I mentioned, June nineteenth, and we'll still be answering phones and emails, et cetera. So it'll be business as usual, but like COVID times where we just won't have face-to-face contact. If we need it, we will schedule an appointment with you. Again, continue to use the mailbox at Old City Hall in Darkest. City Council, your last meeting at the Pine Grove is next month. We are grateful to the Pine Grove.
We're grateful, yeah.
It's been actually really fun, but I think we'll also be really happy to be in our new space. So new city hall open to the public, August sixth will be your first uh council meeting in new city hall. Um, August eighth, court starring Judge Larry Blake will be at new city hall. So we're also really grateful to the fire department for letting us sleep on their couch for the past two and a half years. That's been a really big deal for us and it's been um a real gift that they've allowed us to use it free of charge uh for this many years. So we're thankful for that, but happy to be back in our space. Planning Commission, um, unless it's canceled for some reason in August, you will have your first in-person meeting. And then uh, August thirteenth, your work session will be in person as well. I do want to note that all meetings will still include Zoom access. So we have members of our planning commission that aren't always in the city. We'll still be able to zoom people in. People will still be able to participate, kind of like it's set up now, but it'll be way cooler. So do you want a sneak peek of the city?
Oh.
That's my dog. Miss Roger, sneaky. Okay, so just a few, it's all kind of a little messy because furniture is being um still installed, but this is just a quick view of the duty room. I only got a couple of PD. My favorite is the uh evidence and armory. That locker is super cool. So we have actually extra security on both of these doors and it's hard to tell. This window is still got film on it, but it's beautiful. It's just amazing light that comes into the building. The uh front counter is done, so this is the reception area. So when you walk into the building, um, this is the reclaimed wood from the old schoolhouse in the Quonset that was milled and uh serves as the backdrop of your first entrance into the city. Our conference room is fully set up now and the, the wood in there is also that reclaimed wood from the former schoolhouse in Quonset. Uh, it's really beautiful and it changes color throughout the day depending on the light. This was in the morning. It looks more amber uh in the afternoons. These are the bathrooms that uh. TCBA gave it for. Yeah, well.
There's a guy in there.
Yeah, there was. But these are the, the loos that the TCBA generously gave us a grant to upgrade the finishes. So like all that tile, uh, the flooring, there's a drain in there, uh, much heavier duty equipment in there. So we're really grateful to them for that. And then the extra security. This is the open office, so where um the staff who are in offices will be seated. It's really filled with a lot of light and beauty in the back. I think one of the things I'm most proud of is we did this in a real shoestring budget, but we didn't um, didn't skimp on elegance. I mean, there's just a lot of simple elegance in this space and I'm really, um, I'm really proud of what we were able to achieve. These, uh, this is the main entrance and so these dome lights actually came from the schoolhouse. So we actually still have a handful of these and the, the light fixtures obviously needed to be upgraded. But it's this beautiful um sort of, I don't know, chandelier uh effect when you walk into the building. It's just, it's kind of, I don't know, when you're in this space too, it's just like, wow. And it's really cool. Our new light system dims depending on how bright or not it is outside. So that's pretty sweet. And here is where you are going to be. Uh, this is your new ius and you can't see your chairs, but they're back there and they're really pretty. There'll be a screen um kind of next to the city of Manzanita signage there. And then you guys will have a screen that you'll be looking at that will be above. These are the windows. So if you turn exactly around where I was standing, and what's cool about these is they're all built-in benches. And so you can kind of scoot into the window, which I've always loved doing that since I was a kid. But yours will be up here, so you'll be able to look and then the community will be able to look behind you. And so you'll, I think that'll, it creates, I think, a more positive interaction because you're looking directly at each other.
Yes.
So that's a little sneak peek. When you come to the open house on the second, all the public spaces will be open and folks will get to walk around and feel the space themselves. So we're in the process of closing out the budget. Uh, we will see some return of contractor contingency. I do want to note that like half, maybe even more of the contract contingency was for stuff that we added. So you may or may not recall, but uh half our parking lot was going to be gravel. And so we were able to pave it, extend the sidewalk all the way to the edge, put on a safety bumper at the back. Uh, there's a number of things that we were able to do. We added a, you know, the generator, which came from our contingency. So we were able to do a lot of things um that we had to value engineer out originally. And we're still getting money back. And so what that tells me is our contractor did an incredible job in terms of being able to deliver the project on budget um and still returning. It's not going to be a huge amount, but it's something. And so that's really excellent. We also didn't utilize all of our owner contingency. And so we haven't reconciled all the numbers yet, but I do feel really good about the fact that we're not only on time, we were under budget and we got solar and we got a hefty generator and we got a full paved parking lot and a lot of other things that I think really just were sort of the accouement of the uh, the project. And nothing was frivolous. It was all stuff that we were like, we can live without this, but if we can get it back, it sure would be nice and contributed to longevity or resiliency. So there was no frivolous ads. It was more like, you know, now that we can do this, let's do it. Because in the long term, this will actually be better for uh, for the city at the end of the day. So I will be working on a full reconciliation of all of that. And then once that's done, I'll, I'll come back and report out like where everything landed. But there's still a bunch of moving parts. So I just feel really good about that. It's great to deliver a project on time, but it's awesome, awesome to do it under budget. That's it.
Thank you, Leila.
Yeah.
Have any other questions from council? No, would be good to get in there.
I think we have a question for the audience.
Yeah, Brian, do you want to come over here so that people can hear you? Or if you want, I can repeat the question, whatever you prefer.
We know what time um the opening ceremony is.
I don't think you go straight to the party. No, but we will, we have to, I'm working with Linda and Catherine on that, actually. So once we know, we'll, we'll get it out to the world. I think so by the next meeting.
Just a second.
Yeah. Do you have a preference? Let's just take it.
We're guessing it'll be either late morning or early afternoon. Yes, it's August.
Probably late morning.
It'll be raining?
No, no, no rain.
It'll be fine regardless. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Leila, you've complete now?
I'm done.
That's excellent. Let's do a, a quick round of uh council member updates. Tom, have you got anything tonight?
Um, just wanted to say that um the Memorial Day ceremony out at the uh cemetery was really something excellent and uh wonderful to see Owen at a hundred years old.
Yeah.
Still sitting up front and uh, you know, looking great. So that really does a lot for me. And um, it was a little unusual, the ceremony this year, because we had Mike Scott introduce Brian McMahon to be the featured speaker. And if you don't know Brian, Brian uh represents Veterans for Peace, which, you know, sometimes you think that those guys must be counter-military, but they're not. They're very proud to have worn the uniform. And uh, so having Brian be a speaker was, was wonderful. Uh, I had two instances, a couple, more than two instances where, you know, over the course of these months, I've been talking about, you know, if you've got an issue, just please talk to me. You know, I'll, I'll do something. I'll, I'll ask something anyways. And I had a couple of instances where. And I had a couple of instances where, you know, I did have somebody approach me. I asked Leila about it. One was something that was resolved, we thought we had had it resolved already. And it turned out that there was some leftover stuff. And the, I got a telephone call on the 9th T thanking me. So that kind of stuff really resonates, you know, when you feel like, you know, you, you did something for somebody that's one of your constituents and they're, they always say it's a thankless job and it's not. So it was pretty cool.
Thanks, Tom.
Excellent.
Linda?
Yes, we are going back to coffee with counselors. The date is going to be the last Friday of each month. It will be in the Manzanita Library. It's 10:30 to 12:30. And it will start June 27th. So that's the last Friday. We're going to kind of mix up a little bit. We're going to have some staff as well as council there. But this next one will be on the budget. And what, what, we'll have a conversation around the budget, answer any questions that you have, how the budget impacts the future of the city and how we do our prioritization. And then if there is a topic that you'd like, please let us know and we'll follow up with that. But I'm really excited about getting back to the coffee with counselors. It's going to be great.
Great. Thank you for your work on that.
Sir, ma'am, I'm sorry. So last Wednesday I was at a work session with the county commissioners. They were looking at the vehicles on each rule change, which they have to assent to. And I was there with Kitty Gauthier, who is with the Oregon Parks and Rec Commission. And we did a little presentation. We answered a bunch of questions. They seemed to be inclined to concur, but they had more information that they wanted. And they weren't able to take a vote in any event, I guess, that session. So they're teed up to vote on that on June 18th, which happens to be the next meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission. So the state, the, the plan for now is for the state to preliminarily approve the rule change on June 18th pending receipt of the concurrence, which is likely to happen the same day from Tillamook County. And this will allow enough ample notice before October 1. If they didn't do the preliminary approval, then they would end up having to make a change in late September around that eve of the date that the rule was going to affect. So anyway, we're on track and we should know by the next council meeting that everything is so done.
Jerry, anything else? Okay, that's good work. Thanks, Brad.
Couple of updates. First of all, the Fourth of July Parade. Everybody can go to manzanitaparade.com. Just to remind you, this year's theme is hometown pride, family, friends and fun. If you go to the website, you can register to be in the parade. So if you're interested at all, it's just a simple registration form. There's also an opportunity to volunteer. The committee is looking for additional volunteers. So if you're interested in helping out with the parade, please go and register on the website. The poster, which is being created by our local artist Lori Dillon, is available for sale on the website. So you can go ahead and purchase it. Once you purchased it, you can pick it up at the visitor center, June 14th. And in addition to that, at the farmer's market on June 14th, I'm sorry, on June 20th, you will be able to buy a poster at the farmer's market. So there'll be a booth there and they'll also be there on June 27th. So you'll have an opportunity to buy those posters. And I would suspect that Lori is going to be in the booth. So if you would like to get your poster signed by the artist, she's typically amicable to do so. One thing keep in mind that's going to be interesting is the Fourth of July Parade is on a Friday. So we'll be having the Fourth of July Parade and the Manzanita Farmer's Market just after that. We did meet with the farmer's market manager and she was kind enough to move vendor set back 30, vendor setup 30 minutes back. So that gives us a little more cushion. But just keep in mind, if you're not setting up at the farmer's market, don't drive. Don't, don't come into the area. Because we're going to have the parade ending immediately, vendor setting up. But we do have some mitigation things planned that the cars in the parade will be exiting out Third Avenue instead of going back to Underhill. None of the parade participants will be going back to Underhill. Once they leave Underhill and go into the parade, they leave. And there's going to be a lot of communication going out to the participants about that. So visit the website. All this information's there and get registered or sign up to be a volunteer. The other topic is our regular communication from the public to the city council. This month between last council meeting and today, we had 290 visits to our frequently asked questions page. And then the specific document that's created with often asked questions of the council had 32 downloads. The topics, we got an email. We got some feedback on STRs. That's been a topic we've all been discussing. So we had questions on that. We also had some questions on our work on mainly the planning commission with the zoning ordinances around housing. And then we had some questions about permits being issued for some building, but nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. So that's my update.
Great. Thank you, Brad. Just a couple of things from me. So we started months ago now doing this, but every month the mayors from Manzanita down to Bay City get together and have lunch. It's good. It's a chance to talk informally and mostly what we do is spend time talking about what's going on in our towns. And then there's a lot of comparison that goes, well, I got questions at this last one about how do we implement dark eye lighting and how did that figure into our STR work? And, you know, and so, and then Wheeler, the new mayor there, Denise Donahue, Donahoe, is talking about her plans for, and great desire to revitalize retail in their town, including in a store, storefront, she's going to be opening, kind of putting her money where her mouth is, kind of a thing. So it's really great. There's a lot of variety in the experiences and where we've come from to, to serve as mayors in our community. And everybody in that group takes it quite seriously and it's a great chance to talk and compare. So I feel like that's really a good investment of time for the, for our city and it may be useful to cities around us. This idea of getting people pulled together and on a collegial kind of basis and a friendly kind of basis. So that when we do have to deal with things across different cities and we're dealing with them in common or we have to work something out, we're coming at it from a, a position of knowing each other a little better, which always makes, which always makes work easier. So and a few other things I've been doing, but I'll leave it at that for tonight. Is there anything else for the good of the order before we close? So I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I want to thank Karen again. And if you have any questions, any other questions about what we discussed earlier, ordinances, she's here. So she could get, legitimately get a question from people before, before we meet. Yeah. So thank you. And at 7:59, I'm going to call this meeting to a close.